Okay. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council this Monday, December 3rd, 2018. It is after 7:30 PM. Next meeting is scheduled for Monday, December 17th. If you would, Mr. Apollo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bostancic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
Well, we have a full complement, hence a quorum. At this time, the agenda will remain as presented, and I would ask you to stand and join the members of the City Council on reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would ask from Council approval of the minutes of November 19th, 2018. Motion by Mr. Cavan. Is there a second, Mr. Myers? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The minutes of November 19th, 2018 are approved. Welcome, Mayor. We had a good Finance Committee meeting. Appreciate your attendance and all your managers, so I'll let you have your remarks now.
Great. Thank you, President Biden, Council members. Thank you for indulging the whole finance crew here and looking at our budget for 2019. So we have some things to be very proud of in our city and many things to look forward to. So, I'm sorry to start off on a sad note, but I think we do need to recognize somebody. Rick Oswald was our city engineer for 25 years, from 1978 to 2003. He passed away here about a week or so, well, since our last council meeting. And so I do want to thank him for his career here with the city and his family and our condolences to them. He was the engineer when Joel started and then took over as city engineer from that point. So we do appreciate all of his contributions to Worcester. I want to point out, in today's Daily Record, you should have all seen City Newsletter. This is something we're trying to do, usually bi-yearly, twice a year. It just gives us a chance to say some good things that are happening in town that maybe don't get highlighted in other ways. So hopefully you'll find some interesting things to see and hear about from Worcester in there. In front of you tonight, you should all have a memo from myself asking that you appoint two people to the Civil Service Commission for our city. One is actually a reappointment. Dr. Steve Slack, who was the Director of the OARDC, was appointed in 2016 to fill a vacant, unexpired term on the city's Civil Service Commission. He has served our city well over the last two years on this commission and has agreed to serve another six-year term on the commission for our city. Also asking that you appoint Dr. Susan Buckwalder. She has been instrumental in our city in many ways. She's been in community service and has acted as the President of the Counseling Center of Wayne and Holmes County, AAUW, and served on the Board of Directors of Mental Health Corporations of America. She is currently serving as my designee to the Wayne County Board of Health, and I think she's President of that group. But this would be her first appointment, and again, a six-year appointment. So I do ask your consideration on helping keep that board and commission full for us. You heard all about our budget, and I know Ms. Ansel will be talking about that, but as I say, I think that we have many things to be excited about and thankful for in Worcester. Probably the reason most of the people are here tonight is dealing with, my guess is, Ordinance 2018-025. It is an ordinance that we've been trying to figure out a way to approach for many, many months now. It's what our downtown merchants and population are concerned about because of some of the perceived fear factor that's there. Whether it's true or not, if it's perceived, then it becomes a real aspect for us. You probably saw one of the TV stations from Cleveland in here earlier during the Finance Committee. We've gotten all kinds of buzz from three different TV stations in Cleveland. We've gotten a letter from the ACLU concerning this. This is something our law directors, Kevin Gibbons before John Scavelli, have both looked into and have been trying to walk through the minefield of what to do with homeless people, because it is a true minefield and no one in the United States has figured it out yet. There are some areas that have gotten close to having suggestions. In fact, what you see in front of you in this ordinance tonight, I think, originated from something that was out in Hawaii, where they do have a very large homeless population. And it has survived some scrutiny from the Ninth District Court, the federal court in the San Francisco area, which is considered one of the most liberal courts in the land. So that's why we have chosen this piece of legislation to bring forward to you, is because it seems to have been able to weather the storm of legislation of this type. Our downtown is being harmed by the perception of the homeless living on the streets there, the perception that they may threaten merchants or pedestrians, and the perception that we have a growing group of these people. So that's why it's in front of you. Main Street had organized a meeting to talk about this, and we had many merchants in downtown people that either live there or have offices in the downtown were concerned. Lastly, this law is actually meant to help homeless people get into shelters and get out of living on the streets. That is the purpose of this legislation. We do have shelters here in Worcester. The Salvation Army has been a great partner in this, as is 180. Both have shelters that we have people in often, many, many times, if not every day. They've been good partners to try to work with us on this, and this is what is in front of you this evening for a second reading. So we are here to help in any way we can. I'm sure you have others in the audience here that want to speak to this, and so we'll leave it at that and react as the meeting goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we go to Item 4, there are two requests by the mayor. One is a reappointment to the Civil Service Commission, Dr. Steve Slack. I would entertain a motion to approve reappointment of... Dr. Slack?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Ansel to approve, second by Mr. Meyer. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. And then we have a new appointment that's proposed by the mayor, is Dr. Susan Buckwalder. Likewise, I would entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Susan Buckwalder to the Civil Service Commission.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Ms. Warden. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. All in favor of the appointment of Dr. Buckwalder, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. You have your appointments there, Mr. Mayor. We do have one liquor permit petition, Minimark LLC. Would you please read that, Mr. Apollo?
Minimark LLC, doing business as Minimark 825 Dover Road, Worcester, Ohio 44691. They're looking for permit classes C1, C2, and D6.
And as you're aware, we can request a hearing here, request a hearing down in Columbus, or waive having a hearing on this liquor permit. What's your pleasure, Council?
Motion to waive hearing.
Motion to waive hearing by Mr. Silvestri. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. I heard your voice before.
I'm closer.
Heard the hand, you know. What's the sound of one hand going up, you know? That's for another time. Would you please call the roll on the motion to waive hearing?
Ansel?
Yes.
Bostancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Well, the hearing is waived. Would you notify the Liquor Control Board, we'll waive the hearing on that liquor permit? That brings us to communications from the public, and there's a number of people that have signed up. The first one is Roger Atkins.
I'm opposed to the ordinance...
I'm sorry, it's my fault. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Roger Del Atkins, and I live at 401 Maiden Lane in Worcester, Ohio.
Right.
I'm here to oppose the 2018-025. And the reason I'm opposing this is because, see, there's many statutes that's already been fought out in federal court concerning, you know, victimizing homeless people, and it's victimizing by government officials, city, county, state, whatever. Wayne County has always took the notion of taking their children or whoever, you know, here, old people, and sending them off way out yonder somewhere, anywhere but Wayne County. Can't be here. And that's what this city ordinance that you're proposing to put in effect is basically taking away the civil rights of each and every individual person out here. Now, I handed out a pamphlet, I don't know if everybody got one or not, but it has the thing on it with the county commissioners, and it says, it's right here, they're welcoming anybody and everybody. Didn't say about, you gotta be rich to come to Wayne County, or if you're poor, you can't be here. They're welcoming every person that'll come here to Wayne County. So what I'm going to oppose to you tonight, I'm not going to break any laws whatsoever, but I am going to put a check and balance in place. I've already had talked to people in New York City. New York City will automatically, any person that walks up and says to any public official in New York, a homeless person, I want to go to Worcester, or I want to go to Chicago, I want to go here, they will put them on a bus, hand them $100 to eat on. It's a one-way ticket, out of theirs, same principle you guys use. But there's 1.8 million people there. The pamphlet that you see in your hand, I just handed you, right, is now being distributed to each and every one of those people up there in New York City. Now, out of 1.8 million people, how many do you think I could get down here? 80,000? 100,000? And after 90 days, they have the right to vote and they have the right to impeach. Now, I hate to go to those type of extremes, but those people already knows and already has their lawyers and already fought it out in court and knows what their rights are. When they come, they'll be coming with their lawyers. They'll be coming with their civil rights lawyers. They will take this town into that deal. The bad part about it is, I raised and grew up here in this town. I don't want to see this town have to go through what New York did with Ellis Island. It never took and recovered from the bum plague, and neither will you. Now, if you want to find out the good answers to this, you start looking a little bit deeper before you go out there, start to take people's rights away, to check and balances. I will call. Thank you for my time.
All right, Paul Jackson. Again, I'll remind you to state your name and address, please.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Paul Jackson, I'm at 3997 Stone Creek Drive. Well, tonight I come to you as a homeless advocate from central California, and I'm not going to say we have all the answers there either. The few communities that do have the answers, and I mentioned communities, and it's not to slight government, because government certainly has a role, but it's an important role, but it's not the only. It really is a community problem, and the best that Council can do is to facilitate that solution, be part of that growing process of a community. Fresno has long and very far to go. By the way, I'm not representing that community here, but there is a community group that I come from, the Fresno Homeless Advocates, and we're striving to get the best answers. The communities that do have those answers, you find, are those that are most collaborative. If we look at Las Cruces, New Mexico, would be one. That, I think, is a particularly good example, because the geography permits them to let people be free within a certain area, and then come access services on their own terms and in their own time. When they make that decision, as an adult would do, it becomes a firm decision to turn a new leaf. They turn that new leaf, and they lead a better life, and that means a more stable life, one under a shelter and under a home, and probably free of any substance issues the person suffered, and that decision is firm, and that person makes a new life for themselves, and the whole community benefits. When power comes down from on high, and again, I'm not wanting to emphasize that, but it's simply the role of government to exercise the power that it has. As much as it tries to be facilitative, it's still a bit awkward, just because of the nature of government. But when government does do that, the person tends to retreat, and studies have shown this, that people do run and hide. They see a police officer approach, and it's trouble. It's been in trouble for many years for a lot of these folks, and when they don't perceive there's a solution there, it doesn't become real, because the person in his or her mind has to accept the possibility of a solution. So we heard Mr. Mayor speak about perceptions, and I wanted to suggest to you another arena in which perceptions count, and that's the mind of the homeless person, what he or she perceives. Is the community supporting me, the person would ask? Am I here being chased around? Are my rights being abused? It's only when the person feels free enough as a person, and the person, let's not kid ourselves, the person is a person under the state and federal constitution, and when that person realizes that and feels supported the community, there's a good chance, it's not a guarantee, there's a good chance a person will recover from homelessness. Hawaii, I understand you're choosing legislation there because it's withstood attacks in courts, but as a community, it's still not going very far in addressing its crisis, which is huge. Those communities that do address their crises of homelessness have a very collaborative approach between economic sectors, public, private, and nonprofit, as well as levels of government. And this is one level of government where there's an opportunity, and I want to encourage all the Council to look at this as an opportunity to grow together as a community. And that makes me sound like a mayor to say that, and I want to assure you all, I'm not running for mayor. But that is what it takes, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Mark Gooch. Again, state your name and address for the record, please.
Mark Gooch, 1636 Gashi Street, Worcester. Members of Council, Mr. Mayor, I also am here to talk about 2018-25. And I'm not necessarily looking at it from a legal perspective. I'm not a lawyer, I can't figure those sorts of things out. I'm looking at it from a more practical standpoint. So as I understand it from the incidents I've read about being described, it would seem that there are already laws in place to address those sorts of incidents, such as theft, defecating in public, disturbing the peace, solicitation laws, and no trespass laws. So it would seem to be this is just one additional thing that isn't needed. In terms of the effectiveness of the penalties, I'm not sure how a fine is going to induce somebody. They may not pay it. I don't know if that means jail time, even if it does. We all know, they also know, that there's no room in the jail, so there's nowhere to put them. I don't imagine the judges are going to make space for a homeless individual in lieu of somebody that's more violent there. So I'm not sure how there's really any teeth to the legislation as well. And then, will this be equally enforced? So we're all familiar with Mr. Briggs at the North End. Will this be applied to him as it would be people downtown? If not, then I think you run the issue of selective enforcement of such a thing. Even if you do get to the point of finding space, taking someone there, my guess is that many of them will figure out pretty quickly that if they cause a disturbance there, they will be banned from there, and then we're back to where we are right now. So I would encourage us, instead of trying to find the piece of legislation that's going to stand a legal challenge, that we look and try and find communities that have worked to try and address this type of situation successfully, not necessarily through the legal means, but through other resources in the community. I can't help but think, as I go by that vacant orphan nursing home, that that doesn't already have some kind of design that might be ideal for additional sort of homeless shelter space. We know that there are situations where people aren't able to go to the existing shelters for various reasons. Maybe that's an opportunity for some sort of facility that could meet those specific needs in some way. I thank you for your time and attention to this matter. Thank you.
Barbara J. Ticton-Gill?
My name is Barbara J. Ticton-Gill, and I'm from 220 West Henrietta Street in Worcester. I'm here to discuss the passing of the ordinance allowing street legal golf carts to drive in the city of Worcester. I've lived in Wayne County my entire life, except for when I was in the Army or at college or graduate school. My husband first learned about street legal golf carts from a friend of his that lives in Orville. We looked it up, and we found that the state law allowed street legal golf carts to drive on streets. So we bought a 2018 Easy Go golf cart in the spring of this year at Willendale Golf Cart Sales in Stralsburg. In the past, we really never went to too many events downtown, because it's kind of a hassle getting in your car, getting out of the garage, all those kinds of things. But since we had the street legal golf cart, we've had a blast downtown. We went to all of the festivals, all of the events downtown, shopping when I was on vacation, ladies' night out, me and my sister had a blast. I mean, it was really a lot of fun. Also, there's been nothing but positive feedback when we drive the streets of Worcester. People wave and smile. We've never had any issues with the traffic or people beeping or being disgruntled with our driving. Also, we used to swim at Christmas Run Pool, sorry. We live on West Henrietta Street, and the speed limit there is 25 mile per hour, so that we could drive all the way downtown and back within the category that we're supposed to be, the posted limits. We met Emily Gordon, I'm sorry, Morgan, from the Daily Record, and she wrote a lovely article about street legal golf carts. And there it is. I don't know if you've seen it. We thought it was nice. So I'm here to educate you about street legal golf carts. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the history of them. They were first passed by the federal government in June 1998. Then in January 2017, the Ohio State passed a law about street legal golf carts. It was a revised code 4511214 and 4511215 to allow street legal golf carts to travel on secondary streets. And I'm just going to read this, because I don't want to miss the information. For a golf cart to be street legal, the standard requires the golf cart to be equipped with headlights, stoplights, turn signals, a horn, rearview mirrors, windshield, seat belts, vehicle identification numbers, and have a license. Drivers must be at least 16 years old to drive a golf cart. It must be registered at the BMV and have a complete inspection by law enforcement. It must have liability insurance as well. And I'm going to quote this from the Ohio law, quote, "Golf carts are treated like any other vehicle. Street legal golf carts are permitted to operate on secondary streets for which the posted speed limit is 35 mile per hour or less." And these street legal golf carts only go 20 miles per hour, so they don't go very fast. Our street legal golf cart has all the required safety features, title registration, it was inspected by the Wayne County Sheriff, who had no problems with it, as well as is fully insured, has license plates, just like a car, and has a license plate light with it as well. I spoke with Lyle Baker, he's the President of the Orville City Council, because Orville had passed their ordinance for street legal golf carts. He said that two persons approached him to try to pass this ordinance, and he spoke with the police, and the police had no problem with it, so the law director wrote the ordinance, and it was passed. He said since then, he's never seen any of these street legal golf carts. So there aren't very many of them, and it's not going to be a lot of these driving through the streets. One reason why they're limited is due to cost. Our street legal golf cart was $7,000, with an additional $750 to make it street legal. My husband has a Class A CDL, and we're both very good drivers and have good driving records. If there's a concern about the visibility of these street legal golf carts, you know, there are bicycles, Amish buggies, and other slow-moving vehicles on the streets of Worcester who have no lights, no slow-moving vehicle signs, no turn signals, anything, and so merging into traffic, would you rather have a bicycle do that or a street legal golf cart, which has lights, turn signals, horn, brake lights, all those things? I'm going to show you a picture of ours. Okay, I don't know if you can see this, but that's what it looks like. And it's actually bigger than some of the small cars that are out there as well. But it has lights, it has all the security things that you need. Did you want to see? Yes.
Please wrap it up. Usually we limit it to two minutes, and I know you're...
I'm at the conclusion, okay? Okay, I'm at the conclusion. So I hope that you'll consider passing the street legal ordinance. You may even put more regulations in this to make it safer. Certainly, me and my husband want the streets of Worcester to be safe. But in this particular ordinance, it includes snowmobiles and off-highway motorcycles. You know, the ordinance maybe should only be pertaining to street legal golf carts, because these other vehicles, they don't have lights necessarily, turn signals, all the things that a street legal golf cart has. So all that I'm asking is for you to give us the same rights as you do bicycles on the streets, Amish buggies, and other slow-moving vehicles that don't have any lights or brake lights or any safety devices. And isn't the purpose of downtown for people to go downtown and enjoy it? I mean, I remember when Freelander's and Amis closed, and I thought that downtown was going to die. But due to, you know, many organizations, it's certainly a thriving and beautiful downtown. So we certainly want to enjoy it. Do you have any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
I'm here for insights and hopes. Americans across the country are feeling the crunch of a deteriorating social service network. They've lost housing vouchers, food stamps, utility supplements, mental health case managers, services for developmental disabilities. And we have to acknowledge that what happens in Washington and in... And we have to acknowledge that what happens in Washington and in Columbus directly affects communities like ours. I've learned by working with people in poverty that it takes just a little bit more to help people live a decent life. And when they lose that little bit more, their life becomes unsustainable, and often they become homeless. And I want to clearly state that homelessness is a result of a lack of affordable housing. This is the consensus of a large body of research. And I simply would refer you to detailed information on homelessness to the federal government site of the Interagency on Homelessness and many others. By our own accounts, Worcester has a shortage of affordable housing. Affordable housing in Worcester has been lost due to a number of factors. Many affordable housing options in Worcester have been eliminated over the past few years. And recent efforts by the city and by Wayne Metro Housing to acquire more affordable housing have failed due to a lack of will in the community at large and an unwillingness to approve proposed locations. Therefore, it's not fair to criminalize homelessness when our community itself resists building affordable housing. And legislation aimed at people who are homeless is not an effective solution to the problem. And it will only serve to exacerbate the obstacles that come with being homeless. It might create a criminal record, which is a barrier to finding employment or sometimes even securing housing when it is available. If a fine is levied, most people will be unable to pay that fine, and this will lead them farther down an already very steep slope. So my hope is that, I want to thank the man from Fresno for being here today, that we work together on common solutions. And my hope is that from all of this, we can achieve some kind of an affordable housing task force or a group of people who look for places that we can find affordable housing and to find a solution that will serve the housing needs of all of our people. Thank you.
Erica Kiefer, and that's okay. I have bad handwriting.
You have worse handwriting than I do.
I'm telling you, it's bad.
And I didn't know, think that was possible.
Well, my name's Erica Kiefer, and I have the privilege of living at 845 Quimby Avenue in Worcester. And I am not here to rattle off facts because frankly, I don't have them. And I don't think a lot of us have the answer to this problem. But I do know that we probably could grab some stats from what's going on in Hawaii because although it may have weathered the legislation, I want to know how many people were relocated, how many people were rehabilitated, how effective it actually was. If we have, we have data at our fingertips. I don't know if you've been presented that, but if not, I would urge you to look at that before making any decisions. I'm also here to not take away from the fact that downtown probably is suffering from this. And as you stated, right now, we're under perception. And if we turn around and make this into where people are getting fined and they can't afford to pay it, I mean, right now is an opportunity for us to actually stand up and find a solution. So that's all I really have to say, and I thank you for taking that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Greg Garris.
My name is Greg Garris, and I reside at 347 North Grant Street. The perceptions we've been hearing tonight are not the reality. We have solutions already in place. They've been here for 20 years. It's called rapid rehousing money earmarked from the federal government, which comes to the state. The state divvies it up to the counties. The counties distribute it to the United Ways. Over the last 20 years, it's been perhaps $6 million worth of rapid rehousing money earmarked. That earmarked money, Mr. Mayor, goes into a general fund where it's commingled, which is illegal. That's why we have homelessness in this town, because this town doesn't want to use that money the way it was earmarked for. Now, Dennis Briggs's name was mentioned this evening. He isn't here for logistical reasons. You all know him. He's the homeless man on the north end of Burbank and Riffle. But he asked me to express this thought of his to council that if this should pass, you will be violating federal hate crime statutes. And it will very likely mean whoever voted on that, if it should pass, will be taken and sued personally in federal court. Think about that when a lawyer qualified to practice in a federal courtroom would cost you $50,000 just to retain. So I'm opposed to this ordinance for those reasons. I'm also signing up this evening on a second item, and that item is 2018-21, an ordinance allowing members of the Worcester City Council to purchase healthcare insurance benefits through the city of Worcester. I'm opposed to this because we already know somebody knowingly broke a state law to allow this to happen. And that person who allowed this should very likely be prosecuted with no assumed immunities for breaking the state law. This can be done legally. This can be done legally like the cell tower law, the civil forfeiture law, the income tax law, the internet blanket immunity law. They were all passed legally. They were all passed with the support garnished when the city illegally evicted Chief Atkins from federal land. That's why you're losing your home rule, by the way. But I'm opposed to individuals on council receiving this because I'm assuming if it would pass, it would take effect immediately after 90 days. All laws, ordinances only become legally effective after 90 days, Mr. Myers. So I'm assuming after 90 days, if this is passed, all on council will have the ability to buy into this city health plan. And if it's immediately, then you are indeed using your elected official status to personally benefit yourself, which is embezzlement. Or if I hear if it were passed, it would only begin if Ms. Ward here gets reelected or Mr. Cavan gets reelected, then maybe it only takes effect then. But what good is healthcare if you have to wait four years until you may use it? So I'm assuming it's immediate. So I'm opposed to that because then it will be embezzlement. Thank you.
Turning to committee reports, we have a committee report from the Turk. Actually, Mr. Malley was kind of the ad hoc chair of the committee. Do you want to brief council what took place?
Thank you.
And I'll twist in the wind if necessary. I was on the committee, but you ran the show.
Thank you very much, Jonathan Malley. Just share a couple notes on our Tax and Center Review Council for 2017's performance. The city of Worcester has, through its enterprise zone and community reinvestment area program, a series of real estate tax abatements that are provided to help encourage job creation in the city that wouldn't take place otherwise and in a lot of cases, wouldn't take place in the state of Ohio. We had, among those specific agreements, the Tax and Center Review Council reviews these, provides recommendations on whether or not to continue or modify or terminate agreements on an annual basis. And as such, we have provided you with a list of recommendations a little bit later on in ordinances 2018-071 and -072. And also, we've provided some summary information, too, on the total number of jobs impacted, which collectively exceed about 2,700 jobs, which is roughly 10% of all jobs in the city of Worcester today. So I'm happy to answer any further questions on that at that time. And of course, Mr. Weidenreich, I would like to thank you for your time and support with that. And we also had help from other members of council as well. So be remiss if I didn't mention Mr. Cavan for volunteering on our CRA Housing Council. And so we thank him for his time and also Mr. Craig Sanders. So that and the volunteers from the community who also made that possible, we're very thankful for. So happy to provide any further details as may be needed.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. One question, have you provided this to the Daily Record? This is an excellent summary.
No, but we'll be very happy to, and we have a copy right now.
Since she's here, yeah.
I'll make sure to get that to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malley. And you did a good job of compiling the information for the Turk and the EZ and the CRA. Finance Committee. Rumor had it, there was an hour and a half finance committee tonight.
Yes, we had a very productive session, and I'll be brief. The city's physical management is very positive and strong. We're projected to exceed our revenue budget projections for 2018. We're forecasted to finish about $25.6 million in revenue. Our expenses are extremely well-controlled for a variety of reasons. We had budgeted $23 million of operating expenses. We actually are forecasted to complete the year at about $21,600,000. So we have some nice reserves and carryover to continue to invest in our infrastructure improvement, roads, water, sewage, investments within our community that we were falling behind on prior to that. So it's a very formidable and positive financial performance for the city of Worcester. We're looking at next year, our revenues remaining about the same. The economy has been strong in 2018. We anticipate, again, strong employment and tax, you know, receipts associated with high job and high transactional industry, you know, activity within our community. Expenses are actually forecasted to be below our 2018 budget. Again, another good indicator. So we should have nice reserves and carryover to continue our momentum at infrastructure improvements and investment within our community. So everything looks very, very positive from the financial perspective for the city of Worcester, as they do for the Worcester Community Hospital. Our committee, as well as the board chairman, the mayor, sits on the Board of Governors for the Worcester Community Hospital. Its financial performance was superlative in 2018, and the 2019 projections are also very positive, and they're highly optimistic that they will achieve, continue to achieve their budgetary goals. Just as an FYI, the hospital revenue, less the insurance deductions, of course, was about $145 million, and that's expected to go to about $150 million of revenue next year. It's a strong business. Just as a curiosity point, the projected patient revenue before deductions is over $300 million. So that's the impact of the insurance industry on the healthcare industry. List price versus actual price is about 50%, 55%. The operating income is a little under, it's about 8% of about $13.7 to $13.9 million. So it's a viable business that provides high, high service to our community. The activity at the hospital, thanks to the vision of the board and the directors and the operating staff, you know, continues to receive performance awards and recognition as being one of the finest regional small community hospitals in the nation. So we're very proud and very fortunate to have the healthcare coverage that we have at the economical prices available within the city of Worcester. It's all good, there's no bad news, and tonight we'll have the second reading for the 2018-19 budget, and we'll close it in two weeks at our final meeting of the year. But thank you, city administration, the finance department, the executive team, as well as the hospital, for a job well done. It's easy to report and review positive numbers. It's not so fun like we had a few years ago when the numbers weren't so positive. So it's good news. Thank you, and that concludes my report, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ansel. Turning now to unfinished business, first item is ordinance number 2018-020. It will be presented by Mr. Sanders. Would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2018-020, an ordinance amending Chapter 375, snowmobiles, off-highway motorcycles, and all-purpose vehicles of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we heard this evening from the one golf cart owner discussing the advantages, freedoms, and the safety requirements of the vehicles, I don't know that this really requires a lot more conversation unless other members of council wish to have additional conversation. Mr. Myers?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sanders. I was going to question the drafting of the ordinance. Would it be possible to amend it to be strictly for golf carts versus the other vehicles that were listed in the ordinance?
Basically, we were just looking for a place that we thought that was suitable. So that seemed to be the most likely place. I mean, I suppose that if we were to be tabled this evening, we could go back and try to find a different place that would be more favorable. But basically, it's just trying to find the best place where we could fit it.
Best place in our code to fit it, is that what? Okay. I guess my suggestion would be we would consider that. I think that what was pointed out this evening and the fact that street legal and insured and some of those, the conditions that would apply to golf carts that might not apply to the other vehicles from a safety standpoint might help us control unintended consequences that this could cause. The second thing, which is probably more out on a legal limb further yet, is there any way to amend the age of operation to 25 and over? Like with a rental car, you can't rent a car unless you're 25 years old. Can we even do that, something like this?
I think we're limiting it to licensed drivers, and so I think that would be sufficient.
Okay. Just a thought from a, I didn't know if that was possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate Ms. Tectongill, if I'm pronouncing it. Okay, if I'm pronouncing it. I appreciate all of your insights, and I'm sure that it is quite enjoyable to have a golf cart to enjoy our wonderful downtown. I would like to know, you said that it's easier for you to enjoy downtown because you have a golf cart. It's easier than getting in and out of a car. I'd like to know how that is easier because wouldn't you still have to adhere by our downtown parking?
Sure, but it's very small. And the one thing about the golf cart is it's very easy to get in and out of. As we're getting older, you know, cars aren't so easy to get in and out of, but the golf cart is.
Thank you.
And the parking is quite fine.
Okay, well, I'd also like to reference, I did a little bit of research this afternoon, and I'd like to reference an article from the Pew Charitable Trust. It was dated November 8, 2016. A representative of the Highway Safety Institute said, basically, they ran some safety tests between a smart car, which you know is a very small vehicle, and a street legal golf cart. And in their studies, they showed that there were serious to even fatal injuries that could occur, even going at a speed of 20 to 25 miles per hour. The ultimate finding was that they're not crash-worthy. And further, the International Light Transportation Vehicle Association representative, who this is actually a proponent of the industry, says that he does not believe that golf carts should be allowed to mix with traffic on roads where speed limits exceed 25 miles per hour. I know parts of Burbank, Bowman, and Cleveland roads are all 35 miles per hour, which would exceed that safe speed limit, and that causes a concern for me. And finally, I have one further question. Do we know if the traffic signal loop detectors recognize lightweight vehicles? Does anyone know? Roger? Oh, sure.
My family has had a, they're called neighborhood electric vehicles, so it's actually this, the federal thing called a low-speed vehicle is the federal title. So that was actually something I had concerns about earlier, is this is a different definition. So that was actually something I had concerns about earlier, is this is a different definition. And our vehicle goes 25, it was fully enclosed, and yes, we got, it's basically an enclosed golf cart.
Okay.
And it worked at all the signals and drive-through McDonald's. Sometimes you have the L because they're listening for the engine noise, but other than that, yeah, it works and gets detected.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
Well, wait, if we've had ample opportunity to consider this, I would motion to adopt ordinance 2018-020.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Ansel?
No.
Cavan?
No.
Warden?
No.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
No.
And Stansik?
No.
Well, ordinance number 2018-020 does not pass. That brings us to ordinance number 2018-021. Once again, it will be presented by Mr. Sanders. Would you please read the title, Mr. Apollo?
Ordinance number 2018-021, an ordinance allowing members of the Worcester City Council to purchase health insurance benefits through the city of Worcester.
Mr. Sanders, again, I turn to you and give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that this particular item, this piece of legislation, is one that has stirred a little bit of the pot regarding a couple of different issues. One of those issues related to the potential that we're providing ourselves with additional Another issue is, is that under the American Care Act, that it's difficult for us to qualify ourselves as anything other than part-time, which then potentially opens up a whole cornucopia of additional people that potentially could be included as part of the ones that could receive healthcare insurance. I did, I did some research here since our last meeting and have looked at communities our size, approximately 26,000 residents, and have found that there are two, one of them being Green up in Summit County, the other one being Hilliard down in Franklin County. Both of them, communities our size, both of them having codified ordinances stating that they provide health, they provide healthcare insurance for their city council or elected officials, and it is verbed, it is worded exactly in those fashions. There is another community, again, 24,000 residents, Trotwood, Ohio, which is down in Montgomery County, and they give the council members the options of purchasing the healthcare coverage through the city. At this point, I don't want to take a lot of time with this because we do have a lot of other items that need to be discussed, but I do want to simply say that my goal tonight is really, we'll have a brief conversation, and then I want to table this because I would like to spend some more time looking at this. I mean, it seems that there was a lot of the conversation that we had with the, you know, that we've had about this has been, okay, how do we, how do we classify ourselves, or how are we classified? And then, how does, how does this then become not a potential lawsuit down the road? But yet, there's at least three other communities that use the word either city council or elected officials, and that's, and like I say, and those are just communities of our size. There are other communities, Canton is another one, that provides not only healthcare, vision, dental, and a $20,000 term life insurance. And again, they qualify that as a city council member, not as a part-time person, not as a full-time person. So I think in order to really look at this, to potentially see, I mean, really what we can or can't do, I think we're going to need some more time to do it. The only way we can do that, the only way we can do that is really to table this and continue the research in the background. So with that, if there's any questions or comments, if not, I would motion to table ordinance 2018-021.
Motion to table by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Myers, would you please call the roll on the motion to table?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Stansik?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
So we'll consider ordinance number 2018-021 as table. Brings us to ordinance number 2018-022. Again, it will be presented by Mr. Sanders. And again, I turn to Ms. Apollo and ask her to read the title, please.
Ordinance number 2018-022, an ordinance amending Part 11, Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, to zone land 53.428 acres to C3 general commercial for property located on the northeast corner of Burbank Road and West Smithville Western Road, known as parcel 67-02990.000.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a fantastic opportunity for us. The property was annexed into the city, and I should have double-checked the exact date, but it's been a few years. And the fact that the property owner is coming back to us to ask for rezoning is a solid indication that, you know, there's possibly some, some people that are interested in investing in our community, and at this point, a C3 zoning change, or changing it to C3 zoning is very appropriate within the confines of our city zoning and also our comprehensive plan. And so, again, I will open the floor for any conversation amongst council. Warden?
Thank you. This question, Mr. Dutton, I think I might be able to find an answer from you on this. When council approved the annexation of the more than 160 acres on Friendsville Road earlier this year, we were told the city could definitely sustain the projected needs of that annexation, as well as any subsequent development in terms of city services. I'm wondering if the proposed rezoning and the impending development will affect the city's ability to adequately provide those services, or should we anticipate future requests to increase water and sewage capacity in that area?
At this time, utilities are not, our sewer is not directly available to the site.
Okay.
It will be the responsibility of the developer to bring the utilities to the site. We do have capacity for both water and sewer. It would just be a matter of bringing the lines possibly up Friendsville Road and over Smithville Western to reach the site.
And that's, that's going to be covered by the developer?
Yes.
Okay. And then, when you, when you, when the zoning commission gauges the city's available capacity, do they take into consideration maximum density for these new zoning areas?
Our engineering division really looks at that.
Okay.
They didn't express any concerns with our capacity for water or sewer serving this area.
Okay, thanks. Sorry to make you walk all the way up there for that.
Yes.
I have a question. I know the, they're responsible for sewer update, to bring in sewers and stuff like that, and for some traffic modifications as well. And then, would that include anything that they have to widen the road at all? Would the developer be liable for that, or would we have to pick it up?
Yeah, certainly, if, the likely scale of this development will require a traffic study.
Right.
We'll look at all the improvements that would need to be made when the property is developed, and those will also be completed by the developer. I like to use the TJ Maxx development there on Burbank Road as example, that traffic light and turn lanes were all put in by the developer. The design was inspected, or design was approved and inspected by our engineering division.
Okay, so now, would it just be a turn lane? If there possibly would have to go in, that would be covered? And how about a full widening of the road? Do you anticipate that having to happen? Especially if you get some big box stores up in there and some higher traffic?
It would likely be more than a turn lane. You can't know, you know, specifically without the traffic study. I would assume a light would probably be in order, but whatever that traffic study produces, the developer would need to install it, so the traffic wouldn't be any worse than it was before.
Up to and including an additional lane, maybe on 83?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Well, no other questions, then I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance 2018-022 on third and final reading.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Stansik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Stansik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second? Second by Mr. Cavan, and just so he doesn't escape the detection, Mr. Pukas is over hiding in the background there. Do you have any last questions or comments? Now's your time. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Mr. Pukas, I just want to say thank you. I know last meeting, I had some questions as to the detail, what was, more details on the use of the funds as were provided by the city, and you were nice enough to provide an excellent summary, and I do appreciate you taking the time to do that for us. Thanks.
Anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Stansik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018-070 passes. Ordinance number 2018-022, again, it will be presented by Mr. Sanders. And again, I turn to Ms. Apollo and ask her to read the title, please.
Ordinance number 2018-022, an ordinance amending Part 11, Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
I think we'll all agree that we've talked enough about this this evening. We'll keep this on second reading, and we'll move the agenda right along. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And while I got you on the hook, are you planning to have a committee meeting next week, or no? Or not next week?
Let's do this, let's convene 30 minutes early at 7 o'clock, just to answer any last-minute questions before we move to the final approval of the 2019 budget.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ansel.
Good recommendation, Mr. President, thank you.
So ordinance number 2018-023 has had its second reading. That brings us to resolution number 2018-070. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel again. And before we get to you, I will ask kindly to have Ms. Apollo, please read the title.
Resolution number 2018-070, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Wayne Economic Development Council for economic development services.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Did not receive any feedback from any of you regarding the introduction of this piece of legislation two weeks ago, highlighting the importance. We had the committee meeting in which Tom Pukis, the president of the WEDC, spoke about their new four-year commitment and direction, and the results that we have achieved collectively in terms of industrial expansion and job growth from the partnership that we've had with the WEDC, the Wayne Economic Development Council, since 2000. It's been a formidable run, and when we talk a little bit about the EZs, the Enterprise Zone, and the Community Investment Acts, some of the statistics that Jonathan compiled, you'll see just how important and significant it's been for the city of Worcester. Recognizing that we could not staff the support requirements for this position for the amount that we're being requested to contribute to the ongoing efforts of the WEDC, I'm going to suspend the rules this evening and move this to third and final reading. And as a reference, the prior four-year commitment from 2015 to 2018 was $51,000. If you compound that 2% annually for the four-year period, that brings it up to about $55,000, $56,000. If you add 3% to that annually, it takes it to over $60,000. So this requested amount of 55, $58,000 will be a four-year commitment. We'll look at the level of performance and contribution, and if the track record remains as strong as it's been, it's a very good return on the investment, recognizing the fact that we couldn't support this position with an additional assistant or coworker with Jonathan Malley. So it's been a tremendous value, has driven tremendous results, and I'll just give you one example of the results. Of the EZs that we have pending now, of which really every one, the WEDC worked in collaboration with our team, generated, as Jonathan said, 2,312 jobs, but the payroll, the payroll that is generated is $193,504,826 in payroll to our community. That is significant results. And the CRAs are the same thing, the Community Investment Acts. There's been 30 unique projects, 350 jobs with over 12 million, 12.7 million in payroll. So pretty exceptional results. Our economic community is alive and well. I think the biggest challenge that we have in Worcester, and it's one of their priorities in the upcoming year, years, is getting the adequate workforce available to continue to propagate growth and expansion in our community. That's the real issue right now, getting workers that want to come to work and staff these type of investments within our community. So I'm all in, I'm making the recommendation that we increase the commitment to 58,000 for the next four years, and we'll evaluate the results in 2022.
Second that. So motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel, second by Mr. Cavan, would you please call the rule on the motion to suspend the rules?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Stansik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel, is there a second? Second by Mr. Cavan, and just so he doesn't escape the detection, Mr. Pukas is over hiding in the background there. Do you have any last questions or comments? Now's your time. Mr. Myers?
Yes, Mr. Pukas, I just want to say thank you. I know last meeting, I had some questions as to the detail, what was, more details on the use of the funds as were provided by the city, and you were nice enough to provide an excellent summary, and I do appreciate you taking the time to do that for us. Thanks.
Anything else? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Stansik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018-070 passes. Ordinance number 2018-024, this will be presented by Mr. Myers. Would you please read the title?
Ordinance number 2018-024, an ordinance amending Chapter 521, Health, Safety, and Sanitation of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Myers, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, President Byten Dyke. I left this on first reading at the last meeting, in case there was anyone from the community that had input or comment. As the sponsor of the legislation and having not heard from fellow council members or anyone in the community regarding this, I'm going to ask that we suspend the rules this evening and put this on third and final. I did notice that Mr. Baddick was... anyone in the community regarding this, I'm going to ask that we suspend the rules this evening and put this on third and final. I did notice that Mr. Badick was here. He may have had to step away. I did tell him that he did not need to be here this evening because he had provided us a summary document of to why he felt this was needed in the community. If anyone has questions, I will field them since he's not here this evening.
So their motion to suspend the rules, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bostancik. Please call the rule on the suspension of the rules.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostancik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Rules are suspended, Mr. Myers.
Motion to approve, ordinance number two zero one eight dash two-four.
Okay, motion to adopt, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Any additional comment, questions? Seeing none, would you please call the rule?
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Bostancik?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty eighteen day zero two-four passes. Brings us to ordinance number twenty eighteen dash zero two-five, it will be presented by Mr. Sanders. Would you please read the title, Ms. DePaul?
Ordinance number twenty eighteen oh two-five, an ordinance amending chapter five twenty-one health, safety, and sanitation of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, between the comments from the mayor and the comments from a lot of the general public, I think we've got, we've got both sides of the issue related to this ordinance. And since we really didn't have a lot of conversation at the last meeting, I'll, at this point, I will open the floor up to council to see if there's any questions, comments that they wish to share. Ms. Ward?
Thank you. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out to voice their opinions and for following this so closely in the recent newspaper articles, and I believe it's even been on the news on television lately. There's, there are a lot of people on both sides of this argument, and I've heard, I've basically only heard from people opposed to the proposed administration, or I'm sorry, legislation, and because of that, I feel I'd like to at least share a few of their thoughts that have been shared with me. I've been, I've been told that the city is not taking into consideration people's civil liberties, which I believe was also addressed in the letter that we received from the ACLU earlier today. Marie Bryant of Kiefer Street says she does not believe the city is addressing the cause of the problem. She thinks the legislation could create additional tension between the police community and the homeless population resulting in more destructive behaviors. And she is concerned that the memo only cites three, three cases, all in larger cities than that of Worcester. Excuse me, I've also heard from Mr. Dale Kaiser, who lives in Tartan Ridge, and he has appreciation for the empathy that the city has. He just worries that we might be criminalizing homelessness and mental illness, and that that might cause only bigger problems inside of our jail. I've heard from Mr. Joel Chup a number of times, and he's invited all of us council members to attend the breakfast at Trinity Church, if anyone would be interested, just to find, find out a little bit more about the members of the community that are being served there, as well as, you know, find out from Pastor Franklin what other needs might, are being unmet. Mr. Gooch, who is here this evening and spoke, has also addressed some concerns, which I believe he, he covered quite well. I had a couple of people comment that they're worried, or they're wondering if the removal of Tent City is the cause of this problem. Jamie Carlton has commented that she is concerned that the city cannot actually uphold the litigation costs that will be required to defend this in court. Lynn Schutz asks what fines, or what the fines would be used for, would it be help, would it be used to help pay for more shelters, or to put up more welcome to Worcester signs? Let's see, Jack Benno has said that there are just many variables to consider, and he understands that the federal government is probably not going to provide the needed funding, so this is going to probably have to come down to the community coming together and finding the right answers, which I would echo that concern. Further, I'd like to just say that I appreciate the hard work that the city and Mr. Scavelli and Mr. Gibbons have put into this. I work downtown, and so I've personally witnessed a lot of the issues that we as business community have experienced down there with disrespect to personal and public property and theft, minor theft. I also don't feel that it's fair to put the term homeless on the group of people that are committing these, or causing these problems. I don't think that everybody that's necessarily causing these problems are homeless or fit into that category, and it's not fair to categorize this entire group of disenfranchised individuals as troublemakers in our downtown. So I'd just like to make sure that we're clear on the verbiage that we're using. And again, I'd like to say that unless there are other members of the community who are in support of this legislation, I've received overwhelming communication that people are not in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. I attended the Main Street meeting here in the city council chambers a few weeks back, and there is a definite perceived problem, and I can understand a lot of the, the business owners down there, I can understand their situation and their desire for the city to do something. However, I do have some serious questions and some serious problems with this legislation. I agree with some of those comments that Ms. Warden had read. I agree with some of those people. I just think this would be something that will, it won't do any, it will do very little if anything to solve the problem. I think in the end, it will cause more problems than it will solve. It could, I think, since, there's appears to have been some media attention on this as well, and I think it also could give the city a somewhat negative, people outside the city a somewhat negative look at the city because of this. And I really, like, as I said, I really do not think this will, I think what we have to do is a more inclusive approach to mental health issues, housing, social work and all, and those are all hard things. And if there was an easy thing to do, this would have been solved a long time ago for many different cities. And it's a hard thing to get organized, it's a hard thing to get people to actually want to have those services that are either homeless or out about downtown. So it's going to take a lot of effort on the city, and, but passing this as kind of a stopgap measure to possibly, I don't know, appease some other people, is not going to solve the problem, and it could open us to lawsuits and embarrassment, I think, possibly. So I would, I'd be doubtful if I would be voting for this. Yeah, I do appreciate, as Ms. Warren said, I do appreciate the hard work that John Scavelli has done on this and Mr. Gibbons. I think they did the best they could under the law, that's how they saw the law, to try to thread the needle, I think John told me this, he had to try to thread the needle in this legislation. So this is no knock on you guys. I just don't think it's a good law. Thank you.
It's certainly a lightning rod of controversy when we see the news media from Cleveland coming to Worcester with their cameras blaring and the ACLU, and as Ms. Warden has highlighted, just the general feedback that this is a very challenging situation, a very unfortunate situation, and we've heard, I've heard a lot of rhetoric tonight and idealism that is unfounded in terms of how we're going to solve the problem. And one of the issues that came up from the recent meeting was shop owners not wanting certain individuals, and you have to understand that the homeless population in Worcester, according to information provided by law enforcement, is less than twenty. I mean, there are people that have homes that come out and hang out on the street and are doing things that they're not supposed to do, but there are the people that go to the Salvation Army. It's a great organization, and the United Way for funding and supplemental support, and the Red Cross, and, you know, the one-eighty organization. If you want to have a warm bed and a warm meal, you're going to find it in Worcester, and I think we should be very proud of that. So that's a very positive first step. However, we have some second and third steps to deal with. The third steps would be the individuals that are coming in, and they're disruptive, they're on drugs, they're drunk, they're, you know, shouting profanities in a store, and one of the solutions, and I'm a solution guy, I mean, I like the rhetoric because it's inspirational, but it doesn't generate much result. So, you know, I try to break things down to component levels and say, okay, what will generate some results? Well, we've had homeless people on some of our warehouse properties, and it's so very easy to call the Worcester police, they come out and issue a no trespassing order, and that individual, that person with all their stuff, have to leave our property and find another place. Call that cruel, call that unusual, I don't want three or four people setting up residence on an industrial property and potentially having some damage or other concerns, just much like the shop owners downtown. So I can relate to that, but boy, it's an easy process that doesn't have the ambiguity and the lightning rod of potential litigation associated with it. It's my property, it's not green space, I don't want you there, leave, and it's enforceable. And there's not a big fine if they leave. If they don't leave, then yeah, there's, there's issues in terms of confiscation and removal of their belongings and so forth. But never once did it fail, and that person moved on, one went away and one just relocated. Now he lives in my neighborhood up at the north end, but, you know, it's a little bit of a nuisance, it's a little bit of a concern, but now that's public space, so now we're in that secondary issue. We've got the hard line solution, no trespassing. Every shop owner in city of Worcester could take the twenty perpetrators and said, you can't come in my store. And that's not illegal because guess what? You can make that decision who comes in and out of your store, your personal property or your home. We're protected by the Constitution also. So you've got those issues pretty well wrapped, and the, you know, the, the small amount, unlike Chief Atkins over there, little bit unrealistic, eighty thousand of these in New York isn't going to create an exodus to the Mecca here in Wayne County, so not even a valid threat, but, but it does create an awareness. The, the smaller group of people, we're going to have to deal with, but this is not an unmanageable problem. It's twenty, thirty people, maybe it's fifteen. The high, or the crime rate has not ridden, risen exponentially in downtown, according to the police calls. Yeah, there's some defecation in ATMs and people that shouldn't be doing things in private parking lots that if they first get caught or get cited for no trespassing, don't, don't be in my parking lot. So there are other intermediate steps to try to address some of the systemic problems that we're seeing on a minor scale, and I've talked to many shop owners, and there's areas downtown that are worse than other areas, that are in vicinities of higher congregation of, not homeless, but people with maybe not a lot to do, a lot of time on their hands. Now, there are the homeless, but there's a lot of people with a lot of time on their hands, and you know what the old proverb says about idle hands? So here we go. I think this is nothing more than other lawsuits, I don't really know what it accomplished. I commend the city administration for trying to do something, something, and also creating an audience like we have here this evening. It's wonderful to have an engaged community, we're not always going to agree, but you know what? At least it shows there is interest, and we do have an issue and a problem. I like to hear a little more solutions than kind of open-ended rhetoric, so we've kind of cleared gap one and gap three, gap two right now that I've just defined, it's kind of a gray area, but I think if we work together and we do it intuitively and inspirationally, pastor, we can accomplish something. But don't think somebody's going to come in and buy the old horn nursing home, because that costs money, and the people that want to use that service are going to pay any money. So you have to look at this from a systematic perspective. You just don't build a dormitory for free without funding, and the social services and the agencies and metro housing has tried and tried and tried to get funding for additional low-income housing, and we have improved sites. On council, I've approved three sites in the last six years for potential investment, and every one, they couldn't get the funding for. So you're right, we're trying, but again, it fails because it takes money to do those type of things. So if anybody has a huge philanthropic heart with a lot of money, yeah, you can create a no-fee hotel program with no real rules for the people that have a challenge adhering to rules, and, you know, that's a very challenging situation also, but I believe the support and the cooperation helps. But I don't mean to ramble on, I can't support this because I don't want this type of media coverage and negativity for the city of Worcester. We just have to work collectively through this and not come up with a potential law that it's not going to really generate, as Mr. Goot said, any real positive results or directional results. So thank you for letting me vent on this, and let's continue to work together, but let's come up with some solutions and not so much talk. I mean, talk kind of bores me, solutions are good, you can't cure it all, but you know what, if we just move the bar in the proper direction, it'll be a positive thing. I mean, little successes are still successes, and I think that's what we need to really focus on. Thank you.
Mr. Myers?
I'll try not to bore you, Mr. Ansel. I am also against this ordinance, I think it's not unenforceable from a law enforcement standpoint, but it's, it's difficult, you know, to have to reach out and determine whether an individual has access to shelter. They'll figure out pretty soon, all they have to do is not have access to shelter to not be affected by this. As we know, on the second issue, we are short some of the law enforcement that we need in this community. It would be nice to have an additional five officers and potentially more, so I don't think we should stretch those resources any further than they currently are. I think what the law enforcement we have does a great job, I don't think this is their role. I do think we need an ongoing, sustainable engagement with the individuals that we're discussing. They're all different individuals, they all have different needs, and I do believe we have the social service agencies in our community to support them, they're the trained professionals. It really comes down to money. How do we support the people who are trained and in a position to have an ongoing engagement to help those people who can be helped? I don't think they should be treated as criminals. If they do something that is a criminal act, that's against the law. If any one of you do something that's a criminal act, that's against the law. That's separate from identifying the individuals. I think we have to look at what their needs are and find a way to fund the agencies that are in a position to help them. If they can't be helped or they break the law, that's a different issue. If we can spend, I don't want to pick on our W E D C, because I do think they do good work, but if we can really quickly approve fifty-eight thousand dollars a year for, granted a good cost, I certainly think we can find some funding to help some of our agencies in town to help engage in this problem. We spend millions of dollars on the downtown square, again, we're looking at another million dollars for the square next year. Maybe we should look at some of our priorities and help fund the agencies who are in a position to make this work, but I will be against this ordinance this evening. Thank you.
At this point, we'll say we've, we've provided a second reading for the legislation.
All right. Ordinance number twenty eighteen day zero two-five has had its second reading. That brings us to new business, and it's only nine o'clock. First reading of ordinance twenty eighteen dash zero two-six, it'll be presented by Mr. Ansel. It is slated for three readings. Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, every year we receive comparative.
I'm sorry to cut you out of your job.
Thank you all for coming, we're open to the public every two weeks, come back.
All right. Ordinance number twenty eighteen oh two-six, an ordinance revising the authorized range of pay scales and benefits for hourly rated and salaried employees at Worcester Community Hospital and repealing former ordinances.
Mr. Ansel, now the floor is yours.
Every year, we receive comparative compensation wage review from the Worcester Community Hospital. They go through the Ohio Healthcare Association, who can They go through the Ohio Healthcare Association, who compiles the national wage market forecast and survey based on cities and hospitals, our size and scale. And that's what they use to gauge their merit increases for the coming year. They want to make sure that they have competitive employment, they have the highest quality, so they use this scale, this wage survey, so they don't fall behind or, you know, get too far ahead. So, they've completed that review, and it consists of 188 different job classifications, you know, everything from a lower level network assistance all the way up to the CFO of the hospital. So, they have the wage grades and scales, it's based on survey market-driven data. And this year, in their budget, based on the wage survey that you all have received, they'll be receiving a 2% wage increase effective 1/6/2009. The Board of Governors at the Worcester Community Hospital, that consists of six individuals, approved this unanimously. Tom Capek made the motion, it was seconded by Craig Forcell, but out of protocol and respect, they run it by the city because they are a city-run hospital, so they have to receive our formal council approval before they proceed. And this is incorporated into the budget that we reviewed. We can review this this evening. This doesn't really correlate that these numbers are in their budget. We'll wait to the meeting next week to approve their budget, but this is just the wage scale merit increase for the upcoming year. Yes, Mr. Silvestri?
One question, Mr. Ansel, I don't know if you know the answer, but on page five of eight, there are five categories that it says no general increases. I would presume that means they're exempt from the 2% increase. I didn't know if maybe our...
Where are you seeing that? Mr. Mayor, I mean, you're on that council, I don't see that on page five.
Five of eight.
In, in the binder.
Okay, hold on a second.
The black binder, spiral binder that passed out.
Oh, well, here's what my assumption would be on that. When they did the market survey and wage review, those were maybe above scale at that point in time, and they didn't need to increase them because of supply and demand.
Just for this year, they're exempt?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a good question.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Warden?
Forgive me if this is a silly question, but I'm, I don't see anywhere on the base pay structure, the very last sheet of that binder, that indicates whether or not these are hourly wages that are marked on this or if they're...
They are.
They are? Okay, I was going to say if there might be thousands of dollars or what.
No, those are, those are hourly based on the job classifications.
Okay, thank you.
And they get very high at the bottom.
Well, right, that's why I thought it could be either way, frankly.
Mr. Ansel, I know that we reviewed this earlier, is there any reason this can't wait till when we pass the budget and pass them all together?
No, no, I just thought it might take something off the upcoming agenda, just to keep things... But we can, we've had it for two weeks. If we want to have it another two weeks, that's fine. No big issue, it's not an issue at all.
Good.
Mr. Bastancic?
Just, just a question. So, this, this, I wasn't aware you had 2% pass both of them. I figured you would have, you'd pass the budget with the raises already in them, and so you had to pass two pieces?
Yes, the wage component, then the budget component. Yes. And they go hand in hand.
Right, that's what I figured, you'd pass one, the other one was...
Nope.
Okay.
Two pieces, and I don't know why it's done that way, but we do that with the city, though, too. We review the budgetary figures or the figures for the staff of the city and the budget. And we passed their wage and merit increase several meetings ago, two meetings ago, I think, or the last meeting, yeah. Thank you, so it'll be second reading. That's, oh, that's the first question, sir. Yeah, my apology.
Just to be technically concise, okay. Ordinance number 2018 days 026 has had its first reading. That brings us to resolution 2018 day 071. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel, and it's slated for three reading. Mr. Paulo, I'll let you read this so I don't get cuffed again.
Resolution number 2018 071, a resolution accepting the recommendations of the Worcester Tax Incentive Review Council with respect to existing community reinvestment area agreements.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
Yes, we've already heard a lot about this, and I really want to commend Jonathan and the Tax Incentive Review Committee, T I R C. The compilation summary that we were each forwarded for review, I believe was 102 pages. It's a lot of work. There's a lot of pictures, there's a lot of statistics, there's a lot of projections. It is probably, well, it's the most impressive economic development document that I've seen thus far from the city. I mean, it's very consistent, but it's consistently comprehensive and thorough. And the T I R C, the time that they invest in the process to review the ongoing validity of abatements and Community Reinvestment Act is a formidable task. So, thank you, Jonathan, thank you, the committee. And Jonathan, you can come on up because you're going to be answering some questions. But this request is self-explanatory, we do it every year. There are 31 active CRAs now that are at various levels of their timing and extension. But as I highlighted earlier, of the 30 active CRAs, Community Reinvestment Act, that's area downtown development and those type of projects, impacted 350 jobs with over $12 million payroll. And that excludes two previous CRAs that have run their cycle, discontinue, and don't go on to perpetuity. So, it's very, very impressive. John, Jonathan has other stats right here, and some are older, some are newer in terms of their longevity. But what a formidable, when you receive that summary of the specific CRAs in your council packet, so those are identified. And I've asked Jonathan to come up because I'm going to make the recommendation tonight that we approve ongoing CRA proposals as, as recommended by the T I R C. Jonathan, would you like to add anything to that? I mean, we, there's a lot of information here, but would you like to make any of the highlights?
I just, one of the things I'd like to maybe point out is that this is a community effort with the Enterprise Zone and the CRA tax abatements that we've had, as we share here, close to 50 different projects over the course of the last 12 to 13 years. In addition to that, there are about 35 homes that individual homeowner residents have been able to utilize as well. We provide these same programs to homeowners, and that's been able to allow a lot of investment back into our community. Just on the Enterprise Zone alone, as I mentioned before, roughly 10% of Worcester's workforce is either protect, either 10% of its workforce can either credit its existence in Worcester today to an Enterprise Zone agreement, half of those being jobs that are created that would not have been created otherwise. Roughly, if these projects were not to exist, as I say, the Enterprise Zone was not made available and these projects went to other states is generally the case. Worcester City School District, one of the largest recipients of real estate tax revenue, today would have to levy a 1.06 mil levy on all Worcester citizens and all Worcester City School District citizens in order to make up the difference in, in the tax revenues that we've been able to create with this program, even while 12 of them still remain under abatement today. Similarly, Green Local School District would be looking at having a tax increase of .74 mils. So, this is a program that not only helps to encourage job development and creation, and we've had a lot of success there, and the City of Worcester, of course, benefits from the income tax revenue with that, and to a smaller degree, real estate tax revenue. But it also makes our school districts stronger, which makes our community stronger. And so, it's been a very great program for us to have. And again, I would like to thank the T I R C members for their time in volunteering. But that said, I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns or take any comments with respect to either the program as a whole or any specific agreements that the T I R C addressed.
I'm not, I don't have a question. First of all, I want to say Jonathan does all the heavy lifting. It's a pleasure to serve on the Turk because he does all this hard work and we just get to look at the final product. So, good job, Jonathan. The other thing that I think people always forget because they're always looking at payroll numbers, but 2005 for the CRA, I think, and 2006 for the Enterprise Zone, or I might have them, you know, it's 2005 for Enterprise, 2006 for CRA. You combine the construction numbers, this has generated $200 million in new construction. And we forget that construction also generates income and puts money back into the community. And that, that's an unbelievable number on top of the payroll numbers. So, you know, let's not forget that these people are actually making an investment in the community. And I, I have no problem with the city having a little bit of buy-in by offering these incentives. You know, if you're going to put that much money in, you know, why, why shouldn't the community have a little bit of buy-in, especially when you have a vacant plot of land generating maybe $2,000 a year? And even with the Enterprise Zone or the CRA, it's, you know, 1,000% possibly in terms of even with the abatement, it's generating a lot more than what it was when it was vacant. So, you know, it's a great program and I think great synergy between private and government.
Well, thank you. That being noted, I will make two notes. Under the first CRA agreement, you can reference the Worcester Republican Printing Company. The rest are all rubber stamp approval, they've hit their goals, they've made their investments, and they're running their duration of the 10 or 15 years for the CRA. But the Worcester Republican Printing Company is out of agreement officially, and the T I R C is recommending continuance because the new owner is exceeding the original job commitments and payroll. So, the committee has recommended that the balance of the outstanding CRA be transferred to the new owner.
No.
No?
I mean, in actuality, the new owner, Gate House Media Newspaper Inc., acquired the Dick's Communications, and they opted not to accept the community reinvestment area. Instead, they sought fit to allow that tax abatement to be returned to the community for the last two years. So, that's actually a direct benefit to our school districts and to all of our taxing districts.
Then why does it say continue agreement?
Well, we're still holding Dick's Communications toes to the fire. If for some reason there's some problem, they're still on the hook if for some reason we'd want to clawback, so...
Thank you for that clarification. I didn't interpret it that way.
And it's just such a short period of time that remains, but we didn't want to set a precedence where if we discontinued it and let the Dick's get out from underneath it if, down the road, when there's something that had more, more time on it or a lot more money involved, we didn't want them to say, "Well, you let Dick's out of theirs, why don't you let ours?" So, we just decided to continue it.
Thank you for that clarification. And also, number 12, the MRR Properties, we're looking to modify that. They're achieving their two-job minimum, they had originally forecasted four, so their payroll is down from 97 to 35, but now it's accurate. But they still had hit their two-job minimum for the CRA, they're just modifying it.
Is that Brass Funt?
No, that is, actually, Close-Minded Boutique is the, the business that's there. And, and part of the reason why that happened is this was a retail development that when the project came forward, it was designed to assist one retailer who actually grew and matured and went to a larger space. And so, new tenants came in, and given the volume of space and given the scope of the project, it was very reasonable that most projects of this size generally kept to the minimum, and the new retailer seems to fit closer to that category. So, therefore, the Tax Incentive Review Council recommended modifying the agreement to those minimums. The retailer, the developer, I should say, is still responsible for ensuring that we will have two jobs there with the minimum payroll for full-time equivalent jobs, which we'll be following up on. If you are accepting that recommendation this evening or, or later, whenever you would accept that, that modification will occur administratively, it will not require additional legislation.
Good. Well, that being noted, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and move resolution 2018 dash 071 to third and final reading this evening.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel is our second.
Second.
Mr. Sanders? I saw your lips move before I saw the other councilman. But would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018 071 passes. Brings us to the final piece of legislation, resolution number 2018 dash 072. It'll be presented by Mr. Ansel, slated for three readings. And if you would, for the last time, please read the title of this legislation.
Resolution number 2018 072, a resolution accepting the recommendations of the Worcester Tax Incentive Review Council with respect to existing Enterprise Zone agreements.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours, sir.
More economic good news. These are kind of the heavyweight investments within the community, the Enterprise Zones. And we currently have 12 that have been recommended by the Tax Incentive Review Council for continuance, and those are heavy hitters in our industrial community. And before Jonathan talks, and I, you've heard the numbers, over 2,000 jobs have been generated by this growth and expansion, nearly $200 million in payroll. And the one that just really is remarkable, about $175 million of investment in terms of construction and infrastructure improvements for these projects. Most communities could only dream of this type of situation, and we're very fortunate to have the presence, the industrial presence that we have in Worcester. Jonathan, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. Without too much more to add beyond that, with the figures that we presented earlier and had discussed at the very beginning of the meeting, this, this program has had a major impact again on our community to date. We have 12 active projects. We have had several expire, and by expire, that means that the company still retains its operations in Worcester for so many years. However, they're not subject to a tax abatement at that point. 100% of the property is taxed, and today, that is part of the reason why the revenues coming in have exceeded to, I apologize here, to be able to generate the tax valuation that it has, which is $728,929 back to the, back to the community. That said, there are still 12 projects to go, and construction underway yet to be reported. We expect the, the total construction to swell from 172 million to a close to over a quarter trillion dollars collectively as we approach, as we go into 2019.
Billion?
A quarter trillion.
Quarter trillion.
A quarter, oh, no, I'm sorry, a... that it has, which is $728,929 back to the, back to the community. That said, there are still 12 projects to go, and construction underway yet to be reported. We expect the total construction to swell from 172 million to a close to over a quarter trillion dollars collectively as we approach, as we go into 2019.
Billion?
A quarter trillion.
Quarter trillion.
A quarter, oh, no, I'm sorry. Excuse me.[1279.64][1279.64](Laughter). Quarter billion.
It's not a trillion.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm tired, but I didn't think it was that much.
I apologize.
But then again.
I just wanted to see if people were paying attention.
Then again, I don't have a toddler.[1296.01][1296.01](Laughter).
So.
Thank you, Jonathan.
But yes, no. Yes, thank you.[1301.01][1301.01](Laughter).
Keep up the great work, positive momentum. That being noted, I'll motion to suspend the rules of council, move resolution 2018-72 to third and final reading.
All right. Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Myers. Would you please call the roll on the suspension of the rules?
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
The rules are suspended. Mr. Ansel, I look to you.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Warden. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, would you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Bastancic?
Yes.
Resolution number 2018-072 passes. That brings us to miscellaneous. And we'll start out with Mr. Myers, who's having the first word.
I just want to thank all the people from the community that came this evening to share their comments. A lot of people came this evening that I recognize in the audience that did not speak tonight, but have reached out. Some of them contacted me individually, and I just appreciate everybody's input. And like I said, we're here twice a month. Come back and see us. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Sanders, who carried a lot of freight tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make a clarification for many of our, both old-time and newer golfers in the community. With the failure of the ordinance 2018-020, I know that there potentially will be some negative blowback from those groups, saying, okay, well, what am I going to do now that I can't, I have a golf cart, I use it to go to the golf course, but now I can't drive it on the streets? Well, at this point, we have legislation, an ordinance that was passed, 1992-31, and at that point, that allowed certain limited access for people that were going to the golf course and going back home, gave them opportunity to operate their golf carts a little differently than the other legislation. But in any event, that legislation has not changed. So, I just want to make sure that we get that clarification out there, because there's a few that I know that would be upset if they think that we took that away, and we have not. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Silvestri?
Want to thank everyone for coming out. Good communication. I just want to go back to our discussion about the homeless people, people without a place to live. The goal here is the health and safety of the citizens of Worcester across the board. So, it involves health, it involves safety, and the third thing, in the third whereas of the ordinance we discussed tonight, is communication. So, thanks for everyone who did come out. Thanks for the increased communication. This is a problem that we are well on our way to solving. I think if we continue to be diligent, be focused, and continue to communicate, and look at all the options, and not give up, that we'll accomplish this. So, thanks for everyone who came, and we have to continue to work and continue to try. And I know I've been inspired by reading some things lately about some breakthrough inventions and breakthrough problem-solving challenges that, you know, we forget. There have been people that have stayed diligent, like Jonathan on the economic development side, and Tom with the WEDC. We're real good at some of those things, and if we apply the same principles, we're going to solve this problem, too. So, thank you.
Ms. Warden?
Thank you. I just want to echo Mr. Silvestri and thank everybody for coming out and, you know, sharing their opinions, whether it be through email, or letters to the editor, or personal phone calls that we've all received. You're all being heard, and I'd also like to thank Mr. Scavelli. I know you're relatively new to this group, and you put a great deal of work into putting this legislation together, and the research that went into making sure that it wasn't obstructing anyone's civil liberties. I appreciate that. It wasn't unnoticed, and I hope that you don't take too much that you're going to hear in the public to heart, because I think you really had our best interests at heart as a city. Thank you.
Mr. Ansel?
I too commend the participants at tonight's meeting. It was civil, it was thought-provoking, it was compelling, it was positive. Everyone's voice was heard, and I want to acknowledge that the city was really engaged in trying to come up with something creative to improve some of the unfortunate circumstances that have arisen downtown. But again, sometimes when you see the high-level reaction on the initial initiative, you've just got to say to yourself, this is something that might be bigger than we anticipate, it might be bigger than the problem itself, so let's reconsider before we go forward. And I think that's what we did this evening, and the public input was valued, and again, I was impressed with how controlled it was. I also want to note that I would have supported the golf cart initiative, but I felt it was convoluted with the snowmobiles and the off-road unlicensed dirt bikes that can go very high speeds and are very, very dangerous. I mean, snowmobiles can go 70, 80 miles an hour with not a lot of safety precautions, and off-road dirt bikes can go 70, 80 miles an hour with not a lot of precautions. And there are many small towns in the Loudenville area, down in the Buckeye Lake area, Howard, where you can get in 25 mile an hour zones, you can even restrict it below the 35, and drive in a controlled fashion. And here's one of the things I want to really highlight. There are a lot of issues, a lot of, you know, Huron has them. This never becomes a major issue unless you're in Palm Springs, California, or down in the villages in Florida. First and foremost, there's not that many 25 to 35 mile an hour roads that don't have another arterial access, and you can't get it on a high-speed road. Secondly, they are cost prohibitive. Not everyone's going to go out and buy it. I mean, a lot of people don't spend $6,000, $7,000 for their car that's required for them to get, they're truly a luxury item. But I wanted to let you know that I was pretty silent on that, because when it was all co-join with snowmobiles and dirt bikes and, you know, low-flying aircraft, no, I'm exaggerating.[1759.23][1759.23](Laughter). It was more than a golf cart issue, so I had to vote no on it. Thank you. It was a great evening, fun night tonight.
Mr. Bastancic?
I don't see more at this time.
Mr. Cavan will give you the final word.
Okay. I just wanted to, to thank everyone that did show up and voiced their concerns. You, again, you were heard, and I would look forward to hearing more on this matter if any other ideas came forth, and I hope they do. It's not an easy one. Thank you.
And Mr. Ansel, I see you're taking this away.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Word, Charlie.